6:00 PM here in council chambers. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
There's no invocation tonight and walk off them. Alderman Williams, Alderman Latia.
President.
Alderman Went.
President.
Alderman Timian, Alderman Meyer.
President.
O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Walton. Did I miss one? Oh, sorry.
President.
They have, they have really from the floor. You see everything.
And we have no remote electronic attendance, so we should probably pass it in case Timian does call in.
Okay. We have that language. Yeah. I think it's right there.
This is a different one.
That was one that I read down from March 15.
No, this is for, um, just for example, session. We got, I got.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I got, um, oh, no, this is right.
Okay.
It just looks different.
It does look different because we're out of COVID now. Sorry. Yep.
Okay, um, yes, your honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Core Core Alderman, Matt Timian at the community overhaul and company from March 15, 2020, due to employee purposes or other city business. Second.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Went, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. Any public comment this evening? Very none, questions on the agenda? Very none, presentation, Mr. Vitas.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, members of council for your attendance this evening. Very much appreciated, it's a, it's a huge topic and, uh, but a topic that we can discuss this evening and get through, I think, uh, the great ease. Uh, you should have received a copy of the PowerPoint presentation last week, uh, with the agenda on Friday. And joining me tonight is Sarah Mark, our Fleet and Facilities Manager, who has worked with me side by side now for some time to not only prepare this PowerPoint presentation, we have to give Macy credit, if Macy did a great job of assembling this, um, details and then assembly and guidance. So we're able to put this together in a way that it would be quick and easily understandable and at least bring us to a point of understanding of where we are today and where we might need to go in the future in addressing some of our facility needs. Obviously, we're going to talk about the one-stop shop this evening, which I know has been an issue or concern. Uh, it was, uh, as a part of our strategic plan going forward was to investigate, uh, establishing a one-stop shop to better serve residents, to better serve businesses, to better serve developers in this community. And it's not a novel idea, it's not a new idea, it's an idea that many local governments have done historically. The idea is so old, it goes back to the 1920s, actually, in the private sector. So it's really interesting to see how long that terminology has been around. But for us today, uh, we're going to take you through a discussion on the one-stop shop and then how that impacts, uh, the city hall, uh, because it does have a direct impact on city hall. And then from city hall leading into discussion about our, our main fire station, or what we refer to affectionately as is the central fire station, uh, that replaced the original central station with the two remaining stations on the east and the west end of the city. One privately now held, the other one, of course, uh, still held by the city, but managed by a non-profit organization. So, having said all that, Sarah and I are going to take turns discussing, uh, all three of these items, starting, uh, first with the one-stop shop. As with any one-stop shop, the, uh, the first issue, the name, there you go. First issue we're talking about is location. Obviously, uh, we did allocate $2 million, uh, in funding specifically for this project. Uh, we did that at a time without really knowing, uh, what location would be considered, uh, what the actual space, spatial needs would be for that facility, um, and some of the other issues, but locationally, um, after looking at where we're at, taking a look at our facilities, taking a look at the land that we actually own today, I kind of honed in on our, on our public works facility. And I did that for a number of reasons. One, it's always good to invest money on that side of town. You know, when we cross to the other side of the I-74 corridor, we look at the I-92 corridor, you know, we are probably one of the single biggest investors there outside of the university, outside of what happened along the riverfront, but along 92, uh, there's been very little investment there in many, many years. Uh, so we probably are one of the biggest investors today. The facility was built with a future in mind. It was built beyond the need, at that time to present day need, and there was plans for future expansion at that location. So it lends itself to a cost-effective way to try and bring about a one-stop shop without having to spend a gross amount of funds on land acquisition or new facility construction necessarily. Because my original thought was, wow, we might have to put in addition until I toured the facility. Once I toured that facility with Mr. Schick, I got a pretty good picture in my mind that this building has potential to serve this need if properly readapted. So the, um, and we'll get into the details on that shortly. Space needs, of course, are determined by function, what functions would this one-stop shop actually serve? And, uh, when we get into the next slide, you'll be able to see very clearly that there are very specific functions in government that serve those needs in the development sector that would help to streamline processes and procedures for not only our residents, but also for our businesses, as well as for those who would like to locate here and develop business, if they're not already here, or if they already are here, because that is an issue that needs to get addressed. Some operation, operating and procedural issues, there are many, there are many. Uh, we are right now working on, Charles, there you are. Charles Graves and I have had in-depth discussions about preparing, uh, development review process and procedures that would help to begin to streamline what it is we do as a city from start to finish, from the beginning of a project and its inception to its completion and the issuance of a certificate, certificate of occupancy. So we looked at, we're looking at that process because it's not there and we're looking for ways to streamline and improve and enhance that process for everyone's benefit. To support that, to support that, a lot of the one-stop shops in these local governments will find software solutions, e-solution, to ensure that whatever those processes are, whatever those procedures are, that we need in order to make the system cost-effective and streamlined and, and more customer-facing, you know, customer-oriented, is to look at what software solutions are there that exist that we don't have in-house today in order to make not only our internal communications work better, but more importantly, our external communications with our customers. Because right now, we don't have those systems in place fully. So that's one of the, one of the other elements of a good one-stop shop. And then funding, we've talked about, we have $2 million that was set aside. I mean, it was a blessing in disguise because it's there. So whether we need that $2 million specifically to advance this project at this location or some portion of this dollar amount is to be determined, because we haven't gotten to that point. So we'll be looking for your guidance in terms of, you know, how you feel about it and that discussion that will take place. I will mention that in between each of these sections, we'll stop and we'll do the Q and A, because it's just too much information. So one-stop shop, Q and A, then we'll move on to the other issues. So functions that would be inclusive, and this is, again, this is just my understanding of what I see going on in, in the city today is the economic development process, whether it's tips, whether it's new raw land development south of the Rock River, whether it's outside of the tips, it's downtown. You know, we're going to have to have economic development, the planning element, the zoning code, as well, code enforcement, as well as community development. So, you know, that typically is what a lot of local governments include in their one-stop shops, you know, and they like to streamline that. They like to ensure that it's user-friendly because if it's not, if there's any, as I said in, uh, in one city many, many years ago, there are many dark holes that a developer can fall into. And if you fall into that hole, it becomes costly to get out of it. And we don't want people falling into incidental or accidental holes that we have left on the table because it is costly, time is money, and, and of course, you don't want people spending money on things that they don't need to. So that's part of it. Then the building services, you know, division, you know, in terms of how our building department interfaces. Once we get past community economic development, we're moving to the permitting process. We're looking at permitting, not only building permitting, but you're also talking about right-of-way permitting. You're also talking about business licensing, you're talking about licensing of right-of-way. So all of those elements are, are elements that could be served in a one-stop shop. Today, people make utility payments, you know, if they're not paying them online or if they're not paying them by check, you know, through the mail. You know, they're, they're stopping in. We do still have a lot of customers who like to stop in and make their utility payments, whether that's going to be a quarterly payment or whether that's going to become a monthly payment is yet to be determined by the council. That discussion is forthcoming, but we have to have that discussion as well because it's a part of the process. So talking about our utility payments. And then we have the service requests, you know, potholes, streetlights that are out, signs that are down. You know, there's just a plethora of issues that we as a local government have that need to be addressed as we, as we look at this whole spectrum of service we provide. And then you got information requests, the whole, the whole FOIA process. I mean, we have a significant, like most local governments, public information request under the state laws that we have to provide service to, you know, and how that's going to be handled going forward as well. Right now, that's being done internally by a singular person and the workload is significant. You know, since the added of body cameras, the workload is significant. So we'll be looking at all of those things in terms of, you know, a point of sale, a point of interest with residents, businesses, developers and others can go in order to find better service with the city. But then having the structure in place, let me go to that. You know, having the proper structure in place to support it. You just can't move all these functions into a location and provide space and provide software. You have to fill that space with the, with the bodies that we have on staff, but you also have to fill that with, you might need new personnel to assist in order to make it really efficient. And these are the things to be determined. You know, how do we get to that point? So as we look at the way we're structured today, you know, we have our community and economic development department, you know, which is our, that's our money maker. Be quite honest, that is the money-making department. That's the department that will actually produce results. When you look out the window, you know what results I'm talking about. It didn't happen by accident, they started in that department. So our business assistance programs, we have plenty of business assistance programs that we have available to our, to our local business interests. We have our resident assistance programs, basically a lot of community on the block grant. We have a significant number of grants and, and KJ is just smiling away because, you know, more grants to marry her, right? So we have all of those programs that we offer. There's the development and plan review process. This is something that Charles and I are taking a very close look at with the staff because I want to make sure that we streamline that process. I mean, uh, the biggest difficulty is not having a process in place that has been refined or for that matter, fully defined and having to really build it. So we are building that process and we will present that process to you so that you understand, you know, what your constituents, as well as business people in this community that you know, that they understand how this process works as we go forward. So there's the development plan review, there's the zoning, the zoning code inquiries that happen. There's a lot of zoning related to new development, um, both inside the city and outside the city. There are zoning issues and we need to be prepared to deal with those. Form-based code is just another layer, just another layer on top of your already existing zoning code. And by the way, so the metrics who's doing our work for us thinks that we have a pretty good code, you know, because it's not, it's not a terrible code, could it be improved? Yes, but that will come on the heels of finalizing and updating your comprehensive plan, which is a 10 to 12-month process, which we're working on that as well. We are retooling, that's what we are doing and rebuilding. And then the annexations, you know, how those are handled. There has to be a process in place for that. It is a statutory process, it's well-defined, both in state law and local ordinance, and we need to refine that process because not only do we want to take a look at those areas we discussed before, you know, in the Fruitland area, but as the city looks to grow and acquire an annex property to the south for future development, according to your current comp plan and likely your future comp plan, we need to have a process in place and that needs to be a very well-oiled streamlined process because you don't want to make mistakes and undo what you've done. There's always that risk to invalidate an annexation because you missed a step. So we'll be looking at that. Then there's the public works department, as well as the building division that is currently located within public works. We got the building permitting process. A lot of cities have, you know, the old paper copies, you know, filling in. We need to get to a point where that process is all online, most of it, so that not only builders and contractors, but residents as well can actually apply for permits online. They don't need to come in to do it, they can actually do it online. If you take a look at what goes on just in a city the size of, you know, the monster of Chicago, they have a two-path system where you can do it on your own as a citizen and a resident, as a property owner, and then they have the old traditional way of doing it. You can save a lot of money and a lot of energy doing it on your own and they allow for certain permits to be issued. We haven't defined that yet and we will need to look at that process. You know, a simple roofing permit or a, you know, or a in-kind fence replacement or a in-kind deck replacement, still requires inspection, but it takes a different process. So these are kind of like different, different things we'll look at. You know, the physical, oh, jeez, go backwards. Thank you. I'm getting pretty good at this. Code compliance, okay? Big issue. Uh, we're look, we're, we're always looking at how we can deal with codes. Obviously, the, the council will increase the size, size and function of that, that part of the building department. You know, Brad will be getting additional help to assist him in dealing with rudimentary code issues, allowing him more time to deal with the more complex issues. And I think, and, and then training and mentoring, you know, people for the future. So our plan was to grow that, this council was great, grateful enough to actually allow us to do that. You know, so code compliance issues as well would, would be funneled through there. Brings us to the other, other departments, you know, payment, different payments for services that we render, uh, utility payments, again, I mentioned that earlier. Right now, it's quarterly, we may be going to monthly, that is a decision, a policy decision for council, but it will require work on Tony's end and with the rate people to understand how that works and to bring a solution forward to you for consideration. Permits, of course, uh, not only just the building permits, but again, right-of-way permits. When we do the broadband project, uh, our consultants will tell you that this is no different than when cable first came out and to, back in, back in, back in the 1980s when cable, cable came out, what did they do? They disrupted every right-of-way in every city to install their conduit and install their cable. We're going to go through that. It's going to be busy and there's going to be a lot of, a lot of that right-of-way permitting that goes on. People have special pickups, right? Special pickups for garbage, uh, garbage carts, liquor licensing, constituent concerns that come up in public information and service requests. We get a lot of that. I mean, we have a system, but not everybody knows about it, not everybody uses it. And then they reach out to you. They reach out to you because it's easier, right? It truly is. If you know somebody, reach out. So, you know, like a good 311 system that you find or in, in a lot of, a lot of cities, we're going to look at that too as, as, as an alternative so that people can actually have their needs and their addresses concerned. Tony and I had one just the other day regarding a sanitary sewer, you know? It's coming through general email, you know? And as I told you before, the email traffic is overwhelming. It's because we don't have these other systems in place to help filter all of these requests that are coming in your big city with a lot of issues. You're an old city with a lot of issues and those issues have to, have to be channeled. And right now, this, this would help us to get there. Why this location? It lends itself very well to what we're trying to accomplish. We already have the engineering, uh, department there. We already have the building department there. The only thing that's really not there full-fledged is community development. Community and economic development is still here. So people have to go from here to there and then back here in order to get things done. And it's just not, it's not that it's not right, it's just the way we're set up. So when we looked at the, at this, you know, huge investment that the city made, we looked at it and said, you know, what could we do out here to make this facility work? Well, we identified some future growth opportunity. Obviously, there's a lot of employee parking that is structured right in front of the building. We have some parking on the side, I believe engineering likes to hide their vehicles over here because this is empty at night and this is where they're hidden away. Not quite hidden, but they're there. And then we have some limited guest parking, very, very limited. So as we look at this, you never know how many people are going to show up. Sometimes this parking lot is full, sometimes it's empty, right? The same thing here, sometimes this parking lot has a lot of people, sometimes not enough. So if we were to locate our community, our, our one-stop shop here, probably putting in some additional parking here would be helpful. Believe me, with all of our seasonal help and with our full-time staff, this parking lot does fill up as this image portrays. So probably possibly putting additional parking here when community development actually moves over there and all these functions of government are centrally located. And that's just a future growth opportunity, which, you know, as you know, it wants the recycling center and look how clean it is, but nothing outside, it's, we, we maintained ours well. We did a good job. Interestingly enough, back in 2008, 18, that space needs study that was done, um, looking at the existing public works facility and, uh, they looked at possibly expanding the building. I believe there was about 11 or 12.
There's 13 spaces that they look to add as far as parking went.
Inside, indoor parking. So there were about 13 spaces and, you know, as we, as we look at that additional parking for their equipment, as we look at this area here and we look at this area here, there's certainly an opportunity to allow for not only the outdoor parking to serve residents and our clients, but this additional space relates to a different topic that will come up and that is going to relate to, you know, what is going on, uh, down by the river in between the property we own that the YMCA leases from us, the rowing club, where they have the rowing club, and our water production facilities. And there is a building we own there that is used to very specifically house equipment, rolling stock, right? It's where people show up, they get their trucks, they go out, they fix water mains, they fix sanitary sewer lines, you know, they take care of storm storage issues possibly, but that's what's stored there. It's a, it's a vehicle storage building. It lends itself to give, you know, it lends itself well, at one point, if this addition was ever built, it would lend, it would lend itself to relocating that equipment. It's not important where they report to work, it's that they report and go out and provide service. So if we do that and vacate that building, that building has other commercial uses that would actually lend themselves to your, uh, ULI study and the future redevelopment of the waterfront and that building has tremendous opportunities and uses that at one time in the past were looked at, that could be re-examined again going forward. So that's another thing to think about. That's, that's an add-on, that's a bonus, that's the bonus. That's not the one-stop shop, but I'm throwing all the cards on the table. So then you get into the mezzanine of this building. This mezzanine, when I went up there, I was shocked at, at one, how large it is. I mean, we use literally from this point all the way to the end of the garage for commodity storage. It's a lot of goods that, that the city needs to have on hand at all times to provide services. So we have a mezzanine that's 8,200 square feet, which is pretty significant and it's all storage. This area in here sees very little utilization, but if you look at it, you see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. This is a bullpen, right now, this is a workshop, it's a woodshop. On this, on the mezzanine, a woodshop on the mezzanine. All right, instead of being on ground floor. This woodshop needs to come back to the ground floor. This council was, was forward-thinking enough to look at, you know, redeveloping the aquatic center and in the process of doing it, to take the space where right now our park and recreation administrative team is working and they're going to end up over at Riverside Park again. When they vacate that space, the woodshop obviously could come downstairs because next to the woodshop is actually the park and recreation maintenance shop. So the shops go down to the main floor. By vacating that space and re, reusing these spaces that are here today, you actually have room to actually have additional staff. Who, I don't know, I'm not going to say that right now because nobody ever likes to move around.
Are those not being used at all right now?
One office space is by, um, the building maintenance specialist and arborist. Um, so there's a few people that go up there, but they can just as easily be put downstairs closer to the shops because there's office space available down there once Parks and Recreation, um, goes to their new facility.
So there's an opportunity to turn this area into a small conferencing area. There's an opportunity to adaptively reuse these offices that are up on the second floor so that it frees up space for those who are on the first floor today because the first floor is where the one-stop shop needs to be, right? Aside from ADA requirements, we want it front-facing, we want it so that people walk in no different than walking into a retail center. It's really that same concept, it's kind of like a retail option. So this is the space that's available. One of the things that we would need to do is consider, not consider, we would need to probably have an elevator, uh, that would bring people up to that second floor, right? In case they ever needed to meet with people, so internally you can go up and down. It's not a huge ticket item, but it's an item not to forget, it would need to be done. This goes back to 2019, this was the construction cost estimate at that time. And what they were looking at and the reason this area is highlighted, I mean, there's a lot of different numbers here in terms of the expansion, but the mezzanine was about 3,465 square feet that we're referring to in previous slide, you know? And at that time, at $85 a foot, it was about two, just a hair under $300,000 to renovate that and make it usable again. There's no elevator. They didn't talk about elevator, that's about another 150 to 200,000 at least.
They said 115 for the elevator itself, but then you have to consider the shell around it, so the structure, um, he said 150 was probably high, but it's a good number to, to start with.
So, and that comes from Kone, right here in town, so this is some idea to make good elevators. They're a pleasure to ride in, right, they're silent. But at that time, when they were looking at, at renovating this building or building it out, I mean, there was wash bays, there were additional furnishings, um, some shop space, but, you know, they were looking at like almost $3 million. Well, it didn't happen, this didn't happen and it's not relevant that it didn't happen. It's just that it left an opportunity for us today to repurpose some of the space so that we can actually have a one-stop shop. Anything else on this slide you want to point out?
No, you covered it.
Thank you.
That was from 2019?
It was, yeah, so we had the space needs, I guess, in 2018. And so this is a construction cost from 2019 when we were looking to possibly move forward and then this is November, so four months later.
Okay, because it, it was never presented.
I don't think it ever made it that far.
Never seen any of this.
This is actually the first time that I've gotten my hands on it also, so I don't think that it ever actually got that far.
Just laying that file someplace.
She's good, she's a good reason. She's good. She's a good researcher. She's not only a fleet facilities manager, she's an excellent researcher. And she produces wonderful information. So it gives you some idea of, you know, cost at that time to renovate the building. And it's really based upon, at that time, probably looking at, at, you know, this addition was part of that. And then probably, because that's probably the lion's share, right? Expanding additional wash facilities and parking and garage doors and walls and roofs, you know? And offices, and office space. And office space along the low, the, I would be the south side of the building. So that's why that number is so large. Obviously, if we're, we're reconfiguring the space here, it becomes questionable or debatable. Because at that time, I think utilities was planning on going in there. I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing it was utilities. So it gives you some idea. So, oh, questions. We're gonna skip that one. So, Q and A time, one stop shops. Oliver and Meyer. I'm sorry, it's the mayor's call.
There's, there's other room there up on the mezzanine that's being used for storage. Could that also be used for office space? And is there another location that stuff should be stored at?
It could be. A lot of it's gonna be, um, facilities items. So there's, there's also paper up there, there's soap, there's garbage can, uh, liners. So there's a lot of stuff that's in boxes right now. Could it be moved? Of course it can be moved.
They buy in bulk.
We have to utilize that, um, or if we have the opportunity to utilize it for something different, we can absolutely find somewhere else for that stuff to go.
One, one of the other things I did not mention when I toured that facility is in order to get those commodities. Up onto that floor, they must be living, using some kind of a forklift. There needs to be some better way in order to move goods from the main floor at ground. Up there safely and then onto this mezzanine. I don't even wanna know how everything got up there. It's not, not, not for me to know that. It predates me. But I do know that it doesn't date me going forward and I know that it's not a good environment that they're working with. Yeah, yeah. Almost, almost like a service lift that literally, you know, I think at one time it was part of the original building plans according to Mr. Shake. It never got built. So I'm not sure how they're doing it, but a lot of these commodities are not, you know, they're heavy, they're heavy items. I mean, we're talking about pallets of, of, of things that need to be lifted. So that is a concern, but it's a safety concern for the staff.
So, do you know, because I, I think two thousand eighteen or whatever, there was some conversations regarding. Uh, the parks department and I think council had been told that there's not enough space where overflow down. At the public works and that's why they need a new building. Was this in reaction to that, that the idea was to refurbish that mezzanine up there? And because I, I think even when we made our decision talking about the pool, we were told there's not enough space down at public works. That's why the parks needs their own seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar building.
I think that it was.
But it doesn't seem to be.
Yeah, I think it was a part of it, um, trying to find space for them, something that was more their own so that we could also move utilities down. I wasn't, I wasn't really a part of this at this time, so I don't have a whole lot of information on it. Um, but I think that, that, that was where we had discussed putting parks and rec when we were gonna move utilities down to public works.
I think the other thing is, is if you were go over there today, what you'll find, and I, and again, I'm doing this by, by memory. But as I, as I went up and I entered the area, I mean, there is one room and I believe it is this room. Where there are four desks, all facing in opposite direction. And there's four people who come and go from there, but they don't sit in there all day long and, and work.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so that's what one of the rooms were. The other room was engineering. And it, it was like overwhelmed with plants and drawings and boxes and storage. I mean, things that probably should be digitized. In fact, a lot of, a long time ago when I did this, but we came up with a point back at one point in the late nineties. Where that became a reality. And we said that any and all plans being submitted could be provided on paper, but they could, must also be submitted in digital format. So that once they come in, we have digital formatted plans. We don't need those papers. We don't need to store those papers in our building. So that's another issue that was over here and, and then the woodshop. I get the woodshop. This table wasn't there. I can guarantee you that table's not there. In fact, I don't even remember the kitchenette being there. Yeah, so it's all storage. It's just basically record storage, which obviously takes up valuable space. That could be better utilized where manpower could sit and actually perform work.
Yeah, have we done an analysis of the stuff that's stored there? I mean, you know, it's sometimes inertia just happens and you wind up storing stuff and storing stuff and storing stuff. And nobody ever looks at it, nobody ever uses it, nobody ever really needs it. But it starts to take up valuable space that we're now talking about building other buildings or, uh, uh, doing it where. We actually have under roof already plenty of space. We're just not utilizing it.
Not maximizing the utilization of the space we have available with the modern conveniences of digital, digitalization that's available today. You know, it's no different than your laptop. A lot of people will just file and file and file and file, right? Until they've got no more room left. Buildings are the same thing. It's no different. I mean, computers, computers storage replaced building storage. The government has a history of storing records, some of them permanently. Because it's this clerk will tell you, Madam Clerk, is that. Records management, record storage rests with her office. It is regulated, controlled strictly by the state of Illinois, as it is in every state of the union. And there are rules in terms of destruction of records, when they can be, when they can be destroyed. And which records can never be destroyed. And then it becomes a question of what you digitalize and store permanently. As opposed to hard copy records. And that's a process and it's a difficult process, but that's one of the projects that we're talking about internally. Because it's never been done. It's just never been done yet.
So just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Other than modern day. Thank you, nineteen eighty-five.
So you're gonna reconfigure the front of where you walk into public works. Like the conference room, it's like a closet, it's like the smallest conference room in the city, I think. That's a small conference. I just, I. You know what I'm talking about. But the elevator in the back, that'll be for public meetings. I mean, if you open it up to the public, you're saying you're gonna have to have an elevator.
ADA requirements are going to set the tone for what we do. So whether it's an employee who needs accommodation or whether it's a visitor, right? Resident or non-resident alike, you still have to meet those ADA requirements. So when we, when we look at the floor space that's there today. I mean, there's a significant amount of floor space, there's a significant number of private offices. There's a significant bullpen where a lot of people are working. So the question is gonna become is rebalancing that. Because as we move people up into the mezzanine, question is, is who would, who would move that? The people who are front facing, the ones that have to interact with the residents, interact with the developers in the one stop shop. They would be on that main floor. So those who don't have that front facing obligation, those are the people that you move to the back offices. And these are typically mostly supervisors, right?
So I wanna make sure I'm understanding it correctly, of course, but that, that the council is too. While we're talking about all this space that's there, right? That is being used in, in ways that we think might be inefficient. Really, that, uh, higher height of level of looking at things. If you were just looking at, oh, parks are going over there, so we have all this space, that could be an argument. But this is citywide, right? Especially when you get to some of your other, um, items tonight with the fire station. Citywide, that's what you're saying, is it makes sense that we are shuffling people around to get more efficiencies. Um, not just create more space to make more space. It's about creating efficiencies by moving people together and opening things up.
Hundred percent spot on. And we've already started that process, but we're limited by the space we have available.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm a proponent of that. I mean, I, I think that there are economies of scale of bringing people to, uh, together synergies. And that's why, like, looking at some of these things, I mean. To have a place where we're gonna be talking about this being our one stop shop. And what'd you say, eight thousand square feet is trash bags and soap?
It's not all that.
But, 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 you know, I mean, the, the idea that that is clearly not the highest and best use of, of that. We could, I mean, there are plenty places around the city where you could store stuff. And, and, and so to, to the point of being able to put enough people in there, make them comfortable. And, and have those synergies and maybe not build an entire extra building on buildings else. Because we take those storage and put it in a place that makes a lot more sense. Or less cost per square foot or, or whatever. I, I mean, you know, if, if, if anything else, I, I think you may be thinking too small on the reserve, uh, uh, renovation. That it may need to be thinking of this of like, how do we use this to its highest and best use? And, and use everybody. And, and to that point. I love the idea of the moving the stuff out of the garage by the water department and expanding this thing. That was one of the first things that I started bank, I mean. Yeah, I was gonna say, the, 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 clearly not the highest and best use of our riverfront property is a garage. To house a backhoe. I mean, it's, you know, that. So, so I could not agree with that more. And, and that's where I think with this, I think we need to think bigger. And, and get this all done and du, done the right way. But with that, it may result in maybe not doing other things because we're doing it the right way here.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions?
So, I have, I have some concerns about especially a lot of the. Community development programs, constituent contact points moving exclusively to public works. Especially when we talk about our community grants and some of those programs. People who are most in need won't know where to go, and I think they'll just show up at city hall. And while I recognize that we can't fit everything in this building and work through that. I just, I, I want, I'm wondering if we're thinking that through and I don't know if that makes the one stop shop too big. And that those real community individual services don't belong there. If it's just moving because we need, because otherwise we have to split up in a part. I mean, I, there's a, as, almost if there's a lot of bigger pieces to that puzzle, I know I'm cracking a lot of that open.
You're, you're kind of saying the business assistance programs make sense to be over there. But the residence assistance programs, if you go back to the slide on the, uh, with the organization. Residence assistance programs might be better housed staying here. Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm asking that question. And I, because I think it's much more complicated in that. I don't think we need to move garbage cart service to city hall. So that's why I don't think it's a clear line between resident or business services. But as we think about that, I think it is a, the one stop shop concept to me is most about making sure that. And a person coming for services coming to one place and.
Or online.
Well, even better online, but if, if someone needs help or is not ready, that's, that's kinda why we're there. That, that strikes me as a challenge. Liquor licensing is another one where we're not gonna move the clerk out of city hall, I would imagine. And if there's a problem or concern, wouldn't that be who that elevates to? So now we're back into the two location scenario.
I think we were talking just about taking payments for the liquor license there. Because right now those are currently being, um, sent to finance. Oh, so, so the light blue is, encompasses everything.
There could include, a lot of these are.
It's hard to see, but there's a slight, just different color underneath payment of services down to liquor licensing. So those are a different color.
It is actually.
Cause those are all part of payment, yeah.
I see it, I see it, yeah, this, this grouping here.
I just, I, as we. I'm looking at and thinking about is how we ensure that we're not complicating something on accident to, by, by moving people. Go away from the center.
No, ultimately, the goal would be to simplify and to educate the public. I mean, you, you can't just do this in a vacuum. You go to, you go to cities who have gone through this. And, and there's, there's a few examples that I could find online that were interesting. Where, you know, the, the International City County Management Association had a team of experts go out to Pacino, Arizona. I think that's how you pronounce it, you know, and they set this thing up, alright? And you can go on and, and they have an instructional video before you begin to apply for a permit. There's an instructional video and the steps you'll be taken from, so that you can understand what you need to do. In order to process, submit a permit application and then wait for the response. It was well done. It was very well done. The material that they provided was, was pretty interesting. I have the study itself and the report and I looked at it. You know, and it is pretty thorough, but their whole focus was really on the development process. And less on licensing and, and, uh, less on licensing and utility payments. Those are unique things, you know, you know, in counties, they might issue birth certificates and death certificates. And even those are parts of one stop shops too. I did a lot of those in Europe where that was principal functions of the clerk's office was releasing those types of, that type of data. So it all depends on, on what we wanna define as our one stop shop. We control that and we can regulate that.
Uh, so two things, one, kind of feedback on what Jay said, and I have it down here. The, the downtown manager, um, are we moving the, I mean, that seems a little counter to. Because it would seem that by these definitions, he would move down there. But for constituent services and it wouldn't make any sense to take him out of downtown. And so th, th, those are the sorts of things that I think need to be really thought out.
They need to iron out the details because the downtown manager works for the CED director. And if the CED director is, is at, at, at the one stop shop, then I have to say where does my, you know, not only the downtown manager. But the other position we created was the, the development manager who deals with programs at the mall. Deals with programs on the avenue, deals with programs on fifteenth, sixteenth avenue. You know, it's a question of, of being able to manage people, you know?
And, and to that point about managing people and, and those sorts of things, I think one thing that we've been. We've realized over the last couple of years is you can work remotely and still be supervised and, and, and work through. I, I think the issues that we need to, to really focus on is the constituent services. Not what's the easiest for the manager to be able to like walk over and see if they're sitting there. But, you know, if somebody wants to invest in Moline. You know, and, and we've had this conversation. I had somebody who said, okay, well, what's my first step if I wanted to develop this twelve acres? And I started going through it with them the way that we're set up now, and it was insane. I mean, you gotta go and you gotta talk to these people over here and then, and, and that's where, and I know I have been, I say this every single time we talk about this. But we need the position of the, whether you wanna come to the shepherd, the abuntsman, the development manager. The person that is the advocate for the developer that actually already knows our system and processes and knows everybody. And helps them figure out a way, and we just thought, had this conversation, to get to yes rather than just getting no. And so I, I, you know, and it's somebody who kind of lives in both the community economic development world as well as the permitting world. And, and so when, when we're talking about this one stop shop, that there is somebody who advocates to, to get those people. Who have risen their hand and said, I wanna invest in Moline. Because since I've been on council, that has been the single most complained about thing, well, I guess maybe second other than street and poples. But is.
Broadband.
And, and not even close, not even close. Or people who want to invest, grow their business, do things in the city and don't know where to start. Or don't get called back or whatever. We need somebody who shepherds that. don't know where to start or don't get called back or whatever. We need somebody who shepherds that through and make sure it happens. And and that's where I'm a proponent of this one-stop shop. Because you don't wind up where I give you a place all the time. Well, I went down here uh to Public Works and they told me this, and then I went back to City Hall and they told me something different. But then I went back down here and it was, they changed their mind and, you know, and by having them all there and maybe having that single point coordination that we can actually move.
Was there another question? Do you have a question about that part, Albert?
No, I'm uh I'm not actually very supportive and I like the consultation, but I I do agree there could be people, residents who uh might have issue. Another thing to keep uh in mind is as we move people around, um, are there people who speak other languages that can assist? Um, you know, we take them all out of City Hall and they need something that's only done at City Hall. What what happens there? So maybe just being aware of that and making sure that we have enough staff or even a service in the meantime that can provide like a language line, something like that, uh so we can provide better service for those residents.
Thank you for that.
That's a good point.
All right, are you ready for the next topic?
Absolutely. We move on to City Hall.
There it is.
City Hall.
So um I'm a little out of my element here because I'm used to bringing good news to the council. Um, uh unfortunately, that's that's not necessarily what um we're gonna be talking about today. Um, what we're gonna be looking at is some of the immediate needs um and concerns for the upkeep of City Hall. Um, we're looking at both immediate as well as some of the short and long-term needs as far as building maintenance goes. Um, one of the most immediate is going to be the need for waterproofing our basement. Um, we've got an issue with humidity down in the basement as well as water coming through um the walls. So it has created a condition downstairs where we've got plaster that's coming down. Um, we've got paint that's chipping. We've got asbestos tiles now that have popped up in areas because of the water damage. Um, and we had our friend Drake from uh Community and Economic Development come through and he tested and I mean, this building is old, so it's got lead paint in the basement. So um there's a lot of concerns that we need to address. Um, if we are, you know, considering making some renovations here at City Hall and possibly moving some things around to utilize the basement. Um, which brings us on to our next, which is renovation and maximizing utilization. Um, what we would like to possibly do um as we're looking to fill the open positions that we've got and and we're looking to staff back up here at City Hall, um, we're gonna need to use all of the available space, which is going to um bring the need for eliminating some of the existing break rooms. Um, so what we would like to do is find a place for employees to be able to go and take their breaks and take, you know, take their lunch. Um, so we would be looking to possibly renovate something in the basement to give them that cafeteria area somewhere that they can take those lunch breaks. In order to do that, we've got to do everything on the left first. Um, and so later on down the road, something that Bob brought up, which was a really great idea, is possibly looking to change where we have our cow and council meeting spaces. Um, a lot of cities have them on the primary level. So when somebody comes in, they come straight into looking for the committee of the whole room or looking for the council chambers. So uh uh long term, that is definitely a possibility.
Yeah, so so basically where community economic development is today, rather than that being used for office purposes, that would be your council chamber. With the dais against the west wall so people could walk in, they could filter into the room. There would be an activity for council, obviously, to the center of the building. Uh, but you'd have the dais on one level. You could have the committee room or community room literally on that main floor as well. There'd be no need then for people to really start penetrating the building after hours. Thing is, after hours, the upstairs would be would be shut down, and that's basically your administrative core. That would be where finance and H R and legal and administration and executive would all be located. So it does, and it doesn't lend itself better longer term for building security issues because we can really sec- check sector the building off and be able to lock it down, but still allowing full public access during meetings. You know, so a lot of the City Hall projects that I I've been involved with in the past, you know, some of them renovating old historical buildings or building a new. I mean, literally, when you walk into those facilities, it's always, the council chambers are always forward facing. I mean, you do not have to penetrate the building at all to go into the council chamber. If you walk in, it's a left or it's a right or it's straight on. But it's right there. Beyond that is where all the operational offices are at, and those are not accessible. You know, after hours. So and that's after hours. And then during regular hours, of course, they're open. But then those sections locked down in the evening hours as well. So building security, of course, in today's day and age, always a consideration. So this passing on on. But that's a longer-term solution. I mean, as you guys said, do that. It's not on the agenda for doing it tomorrow.
Do you want to go first in the room?
So then, um, that brings us to records management.
Records management, I've been doing records management and digitalization since the nineties. When it first showed its face, late nineties, is how do we deal with records management in in city government? And and do it according to the state law that prescribed the retention uh calendars for all records that we actually have. And then going forward, how do you digitalize those? Oh, my gosh, it's been an evolution in terms of how that has changed and has changed tremendously for years. Um, we have a records issue. I mean, and and I'm not gonna take you into the basement tonight. Um, though I should, but I won't. You won't go downstairs. But if you go and you take a look at just the sheer volume of records that are there, going back through almost a hundred years, they are there. Some of those records are probably according to state law, no longer necessary to be retained. Some of those would be best sent in these big red leather binders off to the library or off to the county Historical Society. Cities do a lot of different things with these old handwritten, beautifully scripted records. You know, and then you get into modern record keeping and and how you do it. And and the private sector is great at prescribing ways for local governments to manage their records. So that as a document is being generated, in the last job, last project I did, you know, as the documents are being generate generated, they're being digitized simultaneously, right? So they are there. They become permanently a part of a record that you don't have to worry. As documents are being received, they're coming in, they're being digitalized, they're being stored in a car. Nothing is stored internal. This is, this is the, this is like your grandmother's attic. This is really your grandfather, your grandmother's attic, maybe even your own, where you just don't know what to do with this stuff and and the solutions are all there. So one of the things that Janine has been working on and and very patiently, I will admit, that greater patience than I, I think, um, working with the state to try and get someone to come in and help us understand what records are at the point in time where they can be destroyed, um, which records then cannot be destroyed. And which records do we have that have a life before they can either be never destroyed or for that matter, actually destroyed? And that's a process. It's almost, it's 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 like being a librarian of of the records, which falls on on her office. Uh, it's not been done. We have records, like I said, in the basement that are significant. My biggest concern is is that when you go down there with the water permeation problem that we have um, coming through the walls, you 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 can smell it. You can smell the moisture. You can smell that these records are not doing well. And records don't last forever, and some of those have to be permanently stored. So that's why this is up here. It's really a long-term need. It will become an ongoing. It's something that never stops happening, and it's something that we need to do. So that's why it is up there.
Thank you. So I was actually hoping we could go in the basement.
No.
Um, but so that that's been taken off the table now. But what I would like for you guys to see here, um, you can see, this is the inside of a cabinet. So this is gonna be water that has permeated the side of the building here on the north side. And this is plaster that has come come off the wall inside of a cabinet that actually used to be in a kitchenette area. This is the women's restroom downstairs. So in addition to the the water, that brings a whole host of other problems. So you're gonna have rust on metal surfaces. You're gonna have mildew and mold clinging to surfaces. It's gonna probably cause damage to some of these records, and we don't know what's vital and needs to be kept and what can be destroyed. Um, but but those are issues that we're gonna come up against. And then with this building being as old as it is, we do have a lot of asbestos. And now we've got lead paint that's chipping. So these are um, these are the immediate needs, and we wanted to make sure that you could actually see because the picture does say a thousand words. So this brings us to our records. And this is just a small snapshot of what the basement looks like.
I will stop for a moment and give credit where credit is due. These records are not randomly strummed.
No.
And thrown about, as disgusting as that sounds, like in some cities I've entered, they are catalogued, they are in banker's boxes, they are labeled, which is the biggest project and the biggest process in order to move toward digitalizing records. I've gone in places where people out of this sheer agony and frustration key all of their records into a banker's box. Nothing is labeled and their records are just like, they could have thrown them on the floor, but they're contained in a box. Their floor to ceiling, up and down corridors that you have to walk through, and they're all teetering. Right? I've seen it all. This is well organized to the staff's credit.
Yes.
And and it is catalogued, so we're halfway there.
But even here in this photo, this is where, these are our handwritten ordinances. And so at some point, there was water that permeated the side of the building. And I I do think that replacing the windows in two thousand eighteen, I think that that helped with some of it because we did have old windows, but this was never repaired after we did the windows.
Cause that was when when we started the facilities plan, that was part of, cause I remember having a conversation with J D. We're like, we have to seal the envelope, we have to fix this, and waterproofing was part of, I thought what we had approved, but apparently that never got, I mean, we we got nice windows. Right, but and they did the tuck point in, they did all those sort of things, but but I remember, cause I remember going down and, cause I didn't get very far into the basement. I was like, I got your point. This needs to be fixed.
One of those principles on my board in my office is a point to solution, so we will.
But were there any funds that were ever?
I can't, I can't speak to it. I wasn't in the same position. I so I I I mean, I wish I could. I'd be happy to check, but I I just don't have an answer for you on that at that moment. So again, this is gonna be some of the, some of the worst areas of City Hall. Um, this is on the south side of the building, but you can see there has been water damage. This was an old water leak. They were trying to locate a pipe and they pulled this this, I guess, aphasia off and the wall just crumbled behind it. Um, this is an entrance on the north side of the building. It it's just, it's really
The employee entrance?
This is, it, yeah, this is
Right below me?
Correct. Yep. And then this is the old coal room, but I mean, you can just see there's so much moisture down there that the ceiling tiles are ready to fall at any moment. So um, this is in the annex.
This is the adjoining building, which was a jail at one time.
And that has been completely abandoned. I, we don't even really use that for storage because it's just in such a state of disrepair.
But I did learn that gust work there at Paul Carrer.
It's on the door, so it must be.
Still on the door.
Yeah.
With all dust.
And then this is just a shot of some of the, some of the mechanicals. Um, it's not in great shape. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So this is fun, this plan.
This is the fun part. So naturally, Bob's gonna help us talk about this for fun.
This is the fun part. Thank you for delivering, thank you for delivering the dirty news.
Yeah, he gets to do all the fun stuff today.
So anyhow, as you look at the original floor plan of the building, I mean, you know, it's magnificent. I mean, there was a lot of history here. You know, and this, the coal room is here where we're talking about proposed storage. Because this is where the tiles are literally popping off the floor, the asbestos tiles. So and it's because of the amount of water that permeates into there and flooded that floor and, you know, eventually things pop up. There's the old boiler room here, and this is basically the mechanical central to the building and the existing. I think that's the men's room that's actually over here. And like any old building, there are vaults on every level. There are vaults everywhere. There's a vault here and there's a vault here. And we have vaults above, right? Um, when we looked at this without even having seen this plan, I walked down there, looked around and said, I go, where would be the best place? I think it was you. Said, where would be the best place after touring this that we can put an employee cafeteria, a lounge area, somewhere where they can get away from their desk, relieve themselves from the computer screen, enjoy their lunch, take a break. You know, which is all healthy. Any good H R department will tell you that's critical to get away from that desk. Don't eat your lunch at your desk and keep pounding on the keyboard because you know what? You're gonna get heartburn. It's just not the thing to do, right? So get away. The funny thing was, is when I looked at the original plan, it says lounging room. I had never seen this plan. This was the lounging room as designed by the original forefathers who built this building. So I chuckled when I saw that, but we would propose putting in an employee area here. The the stairs outside the north side of the building are right here. Oh, get back. Thank you. Nope, wrong direction. There it is. You know, so the stairs are here behind me that come come down into this area. So we'd be able to access that through the outside and and people could go outside and walk and they could sit down here. Uh, you have the women's restroom that exists today that I believe is here. And then this is a comfort station. I wasn't around back then, but I'm sure, I'm sure we all know what that means. It's a comfort station, and those are all commotes.
So there's plumbing.
So there's all the plumbing here, which means that it makes for an easy renovation. And then some possible file storage as we look at digitizing records, but not trying to, you know, overburden ourselves with paper, paper records and saving trees, right? Um, gymnasium. We haven't decided what, if anything, to do here. It's a massive area. Right now, there's a lot of false walls, no load bearing, but a lot of false walls. Cause at some time, I think Bart Suncham had told me, and we renovated that whole basement and everyone was down there. Well, they all vacated it. They're everywhere but here right now, right? Uh, gymnasium, I can imagine, you know, old old bicycles and and old rowing machines. I have no idea what was in there, but this was a gymnasium. And there was a meeting, testing room, meter testing room here, and a chem lab was actually chemistry lab in the corner.
Biological lab.
Biological.
Utilities was down.
Utilities was in the basement, right? So so this is what we're really looking at doing is is finding a way to create some limited improvement space in the basement. Not fully maximizing or utilizing all of the space initially, but at least creating an environment where the employees can get away. And get get some time away from the computers.
Right. And just to add to one idea, um, just in the research that I found, the the basement was actually vacated around nineteen ninety-five during a space needs analysis um, that found excessive levels of radon in the basement. So um, in two thousand eighteen, I was able to put in radon mitigation so that we could attempt to try and and put people back down there so that we could maximize the usage and actually use the space in the building. Um, so we have taken a step in the right direction. Um, so what we would think would probably be the next logical step would be to move forward with, we'd have to do the asbestos tile removal first. We have to do the asbestos abatement and then the waterproofing. Um, with the waterproofing, they have to take off about four and a half feet up the wall. They have to get rid of the plaster. So that's gonna get rid of a lot of the lead paint, but then we would have to get the rest of it off. So I mean,
Which is the ceilings, the door frames, the window.
Yes.
Window surrounds, you know, and the walls. I mean, it's literally everywhere. So not that it's gonna chew on anything, you know, it's not like that, but but still, it presents a health answer.
So we can do questions now.
Q and A time.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So you said that the digital digitalization of the
So you said that the digital, digitalization of these records is gonna take some time.
Yes.
Uh, you have a timeline on that of how long that would take? Because that has to go first. That's the first piece, right? You have to do the.
In part, yes, yes. Um, you know, we probably would not do it in-house. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. I, I would probably strongly encourage council to approve at some point in our, our P uh, with companies that specialize in, in digitalizing records. So that they would, uh, one company would be destroying records that could be destroyed, basically shredding. Uh, and another company could be digital, digitalizing records for permanent storage based upon whatever the state reports to the clerk. Uh, falls on the clerk's office to deal with these records. Um, and again, some of the records would, would leave the building and go probably to historic, for historical purposes where they could be preserved. So really there's some incredible history in this building.
You're, you're saying that has to be completed first before any of the rest of it?
Not necessarily completed.
Simultaneously. I, I think I would wanna move forward with, I'd wanna move forward with the process. I mean, we could temporarily, temporarily relocate records. I mean, I can tell you that there is tremendous record storage downtown Fifth Avenue. Uh, if you look out the windows of Caleb and Harper and you look, you know, look at, look out the window, look across the street, you're gonna see that the upper floors are nothing but record storage. And they belong to Caleb and Harper.
So then after that, what's the timeline? I mean, do you have any idea?
I, I'm envisioning that, you know, this whole process between the one-stop shop and and getting A and E contract on place, in place. Uh, because we can't do it without some assistance. I mean, we do have to have some assistance to do this. Uh, between that and then, and then the records, it's, it's the balance of this year. I mean, it's probably the full year and probably into next year. So it's not gonna happen overnight. I mean, with our eighty-five program projects we have going on, plus all of the old issues we're still dealing with and trying to resolve, you know, we're looking at a minimum twelve months, minimum, to get through this whole process and maybe fifteen.
Seems like a lot.
It is. Well, I'm, I'm.
You're very optimistic.
I, I'm optimistic, yes. I'm not a member of the optimist club, but I'm optimistic. You know, I'm not a pessimist, never have. It can be done, you know, and, and on an aggressive schedule, yeah, probably fifteen months. Yeah. And that's assuming we can get the state to have anybody show up to address the clerk's biggest concern is what is what and what can I do going forward? Because without that, it's, you cannot advance that project.
Yeah, I, I, there are definitely third-party companies that do that, that are familiar with state laws and everything that digitize, destroy, all that kind of stuff. I think that that's something we should do immediately. We're, we're gonna, regardless of what we do with the other things, that, all that needs to be done. And so I, I would be a proponent of doing that right away. As far as the council room and, and community room and, and those sorts of things. A couple of things. One, we have a great community room just right across the street at the, the Mundy Station. And so I, I'm not sure if we need both. Um, you know, so I mean, th- there, that, that could be something where, and, and maybe even temporarily, we, while you're doing whatever the stuff is, that we use that as the council chambers and, and those sorts of things. The alternative also could be if we wanna have a, you know, come in, do the thing, you know, one option could be to do a small addition off of this, maybe towards the, the parking lot out here, vacate this uh, alleyway and put the council chambers right there, ground floor, come in as far as cost and everything. And, and if you then open this and that up to being able to put space for people, I think you wind up solving a lot of issues. Um, and so you could have the, you know, I guess we could have the debate or the, the conversation of whether we just make the police community room both, cause I don't think we have that many situations where immediately happening here and immediately happening there at the same time.
That plus the library.
Yeah.
At that, the library should really be thought of as off limits because they have so much wonderful programming on all the nights that we have. We can't take that.
And I agree with that, but I, I do think that, you know,
Yeah.
Us spending a bunch of money to build another community room two hundred and fifty feet from a great one that's already built out, has all the technology and all that. We did the, a plant commission there the other day and it's, I mean, it's got good space and, and those sorts of things. So I, I, I think that that's something that we should, uh, really consider. Um, and then when you're talking about the cafeteria, that's, you're not like serving food and okay, no.
No, just, just somewhere that they can go and sit and have lunch and there will be a refrigerator and, you know, tables.
Microwaves, refrigerators, you know, television.
Break room.
Relaxing, a break room, yes.
Okay, awesome. And then, um, off-site storage, I mean, once we digitize the, the, the things that are required to be kept, I, I don't, I don't remember anything in statute where it has to be at City Hall.
Does not, nope.
So that kinda gets into.
We've got eighty-two hundred square feet at Public Works.
I managed one city that their records were two hundred and fifty miles away from where they were located.
I think that may be excessive, but.
It was. I, I, I questioned it. I was, I was chastised for even questioning it.
Um, but I think that there's some, some real opportunities. Again, for synergies, economy as a scale and, and utilizing our space much better, so.
We wanna maximize everything we own without ever having to build something brand new as much as necessary. You know, I see this as your administrative center, right? More than anything else, it becomes the back office operation of what runs the city while the front-facing operation is over there and you've got your police and you have your, your, your fire station facility and your library and your parks, so.
Thank you. So I, I had an opportunity a couple different times to go down, go through those records with staff, find, um, old development plans with that, you know, a few boxes in a few minutes. It wasn't too bad. We were able to find things that we needed. So it is really well taken care of, I guess. Um, asbestos and lead, is it limited to the basement or is?
Um, there's asbestos tile throughout the building. The problem is that when it starts to pop up and when it starts to disintegrate and break, that's when it creates a hazard. So as long as the asbestos tile isn't attacked, it's not presenting any kind of a health issue. So what we're seeing in the basement where the water, where it took water, it's, it's crumbling. Like it, it turns to dust when you step on it. So it's in bad shape and it's in need of abatement immediately downstairs. But everywhere else in the building, it, it's in okay shape.
It's not a place that anybody occupies or has any reason to go.
And we can actually lay, um, like a luxury vinyl tile or something right over the top of it. We can put carpet over the top of it and that's, yeah, that's acceptable.
So we have solutions.
Other questions?
Oh, thank you. So now we move back to that. Now we're gonna go, we're gonna go to central fire station.
So have any of you gotten a chance to do a full tour of central fires? Okay, um, have you been into like the mechanical rooms and all of that? Okay, perfect, okay. Okay, so I mean, for those of you who have seen it, um, you know, it, it, it could use a little bit of love. Um, for those of you who haven't, um, there, there's some issues that, um, we've encountered with this building. It was built in the seventies. Um, unfortunately, it, it hasn't had the, um, the attention that it needs to maintain the building to, to, you know, where it really could be. One of the first issues that we know about is that there is lead in the basement. Um, there was a firing range down there when the police department occupied half of it. When they left, it was just abandoned. So it was never actually mitigated. So there is a huge chunk of the basement that is completely unusable to us because of the lead dust.
Below the garage.
Correct. It's below the administrative garage, um, where the chief parks and the, uh, command vehicles. Um, additionally, on the entire south side of the wall, there are water penetration marks. So you can see that it's not completely waterproofed. It's up against a hill. Um, so we know that there's an issue with water, which again presents an issue with humidity. So we also have to consider that when we talk about the electrical. So if, if the door frames are resting on the inside of the building, you have to imagine what that's doing to the electrical. Additionally, the heating and air conditioning in this building, all of the mechanicals are original. So it's, we have been limping it along, I think with the exception of the chiller unit on the outside of the building, most of that stuff is original in there, including boilers. Um, we, in all of the research that I did and all of the different studies, nothing was ever identified about plumbing. So you, I, I would say it's safe to assume that that's all original as well. We know that the roof was addressed in two thousand seven when they removed the police parking from the, they used to park over the finance department. So we know that they removed that bridge and addressed the roof at that time. So that was two thousand seven. So it, it's coming up on, on a stage. Um, but I could not find anything about window replacement. So that tells me that those are probably gonna be due before too long, just because they're the originals as well. Um, so on the next slide, if you've had a chance to review this, you'll see, um, an array of different studies that have been done, engineering reports, space needs analysis, comprehensive reports. Um, so we'll kind of touch on a few of those, but they're gonna identify some key issues. And then we're gonna get to the big question is whether, um, it is gonna be more advantageous to the city to renovate versus, you know, looking for possibly a new location for central fire. So I won't bore you. I'm not gonna go through each one of these, but these are all of the different times that we have had some kind of a study done that included the central fire station. And what I'd like to point out is December two thousand six. So at this point, the police department had already gotten authorization to move forward with building the new police station across the street. And at that time, council acknowledged that, okay, we need a new fire station. But at that time, we were building the police department and the library at the same time. So our bonding was probably a little thin at that point. So they authorized just over nine hundred thousand dollars because the new building just wasn't possible. But even with the allocated funding, as you'll see in the next slide, it wasn't enough to make the necessary repairs to get this building to even be a fifteen to twenty-year building from that point in two thousand six. So council authorized the money. We paid for professional services to come in and tell us what we could do to renovate it to make it more specific to the fire department. So some money was invested in doing, um, some upgrades to like the living quarters. And they built the classroom and the weight room and they, they did some work on the administrative offices and they redid the roof. Then two thousand nine comes along and we start looking at the HVAC system. So we spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on an engineering study for them to come back and tell us that we need a new, and a new HVAC system, which we already knew. And then we spent sixty-five thousand dollars on it and that was the last thing that I could find as far as the HVAC replacement. So unfortunately, things are identified, but we haven't been able to follow up and finish these projects.
You might point out the bottom one is customized.
Oh, oh, okay. So yes, so one of the things that we're finding now, knowing that this is all original, TMI has been doing our maintenance service for us. So they come through and they, they check everything, they change our filters. And they have told us for a couple of years, you, you need to be prepared because we can't get parts for some of these components anymore. And so things are gonna have to be custom made. So in two thousand eighteen, we had to have a custom gas control valve done and it cost us twenty-seven thousand dollars. And this is, it's, it was just a Band-Aid to keep limping it along, but that's, that's where we were at. So unfortunately, this is gonna show us all of the money that we've spent on studies. In two thousand six, when we were told in a space needs study that it would be a good idea to move forward with doing a new police station and a new fire station, but we weren't able to do both. They said that at least four million dollars would have need to have been set aside to do the complete HVAC and electrical upgrades. So that was just for those two components of the building with HVAC and then the electrical. So we looked at what the cost of the dollar has gone up since two thousand six and it's thirty-nine point four six percent. So if we were just looking at the cost of money, it's gone up one point six million dollars. So this is just for HVAC and electrical again. So additionally, now that we're talking about moving finance over to City Hall and the police department had vacated the building, it's incredibly oversized. Um, we know that the fire department likes the storage because there is a lot of space. But if you think about the water issues and the lead in the basement, we really can't use a lot of it. And then we've just got some photos, um, in case anybody hasn't. So this is the floor in, this is the.
Above the shooting range.
This is above the shooting range, right? So you can see the concrete is completely disintegrating here. Um, it was recommended in nineteen, maybe nineteen, maybe nineteen ninety-five. I'll have to look back, but in one of those, it was identified that this was one of the primary concerns that needed to be addressed. Because this is not, this is starting to disintegrate and it can come down and leak through and down into the, um, the shooting range. So it can drip through the ceiling. It's a waffle ceiling. We've just got.
This was some of the remodel.
Some of the remodel was in the living quarters. So you can see, um, they've got fans in almost every one of these small areas because the HVAC is just not efficient. It wasn't set up for these, for the living stations that were, that were kind of put together in the remodel. So you can see they've got fans hanging there in every room. And a lot of this is gonna be aesthetics. I mean, the paint's coming apart, but they've got, they don't have enough electrical for what they need. Tiles are coming off. Um, I put this picture in here because they still do have two, well, one right now, but functioning fire poles. And they don't have any kind of a mechanism that's gonna prevent the exhaust fumes with the exception of the climate event. They do have that, but when they're backing in, it, it can permeate through there. So it, it's something that we wanna be aware of. Yep, next picture. This is some of the remodel. We've got some administrative offices. It's more storage. Even in the classrooms that we, we spent funding on the remodel, you can see the humidity has caused rust on the ceiling, on the ceilings. So even the newest part of the building is already starting to see some of that damage. And this is where they're storing their important files. They're using the old jail cells. So they don't really have a proper place to store things. They don't have lockers to be able to put their turnout gears or their, um, their dress.
Dress blues. And I mean, and, and the cost for turnout gear for their bunker gear is significant. I mean, that is one of the most significant investments. That would be SCBA's that need to be replaced on a regular basis. And that is not how they're storing. That's not.
Deputy Chief Reganweather was.
Hey, Chief.
Was, um, he, he was recently talking to some people about fire stations and the, the life cycle of them. And if you think about it, they are going, going to see deterioration faster than a normal city building because they're used twenty-four hours a day. So it's natural for those, those stations to need a little bit of extra attention because they are used three times as much as any other buildings are. And these are, these are just a few more photos. So again, the concrete, but you can see this is an interior door frame that's got so much rust that it's falling apart.
Storage.
This is storage that they've put in. And this was actually there when the police department was there. So this is reused storage space. But I mean, we've got tiles that have popped up, water that had come through the wall. It's been addressed, but you can still see the damage in there.
You see the water damage on the wall in second direction. And part of this is it's built into a hole. So you have hydrostatic, hydrostatic pressure.
Correct.
Putting pressure against that south wall of this building, which is where most of the water damage is at. Uh, there's flooding that happens during high, high rain events. Uh, the elevator shaft.
The elevator shaft does get water in it. So you can just see this is on the south wall here, some more water permeation. I know. Um, some of the electrical, it, some of the old electrical had been abandoned and we've had to run new electrical. And so it, it's just. And so it's it's just, it's just been left there. Plumbing, this, I hope that that is a stormwater line. But this is plumbing in the basement that is just, it's just starting to to just rot out. And then we've got our mechanicals, our unit ventilators. Almost every single one of them is in need of some serious work. But I mean, really, they should probably just be replaced. So here's our our assessment. This is actually the firing range over here on the right. So you can see some of the water that had been in there now. Because this was abandoned, it's really not used. So I can't tell you if this is new or if this is older. But but we know that it exists. So these are the assessments. I mean, the yeah, the items that we know need to be addressed. I mean, we know that a new roof and windows are on the horizon. Those are not immediate needs. Carpet, that's an easy thing, but it does need new carpet because it hasn't had it in a very long time. We know that there are electrical and mechanical needs. We know about the water and the lead. And then we know that there is asbestos tile throughout the building as well.
So we move, so we move to this point, because there's one more slide.
There is.
So anyhow, just quick summary. Obviously, there's the one stop shop, which is funded. Obviously, we really, you know, we need to accelerate that project. That really is a front facing project to benefit what we would like to achieve, not only downtown, but all around the city in terms of new growth, redevelopment, redevelopment, and providing better level service to the customers, our citizens and our local businesses and developers. The City Hall, obviously, it's a basement issue. It's a records issue. It's once we start putting people into offices and eliminating all of the spaces that they've been using. All the vacancies occurred and positions weren't filled. Offices became break rooms. And so there were moving people around. We've already started that process. And then, of course, the the fire station is is probably an issue that that I didn't expect. But once I saw it, I couldn't ignore it. So having seen it and knowing what the conditions are, it just begs the question, you know. Personally or professionally, I can't see spending more money on a study to go in and decide what to do. I mean, when you have a four point one million dollar problem from two thousand and six that went unaddressed, what will somebody professionally tell us other than what we already know? But just give us a bigger, a bigger ticket, right? A bigger sticker price to fix it. So it's going to really come down to the question of, you know, do we replace it? When do we replace it? How do we finance that? Because we could certainly use excess general fund reserves because that helps keep the debt down, right? Rather than borrowing more than less, that's one way to do it. We obviously will need to borrow some money for a fire station replacement. I don't think we have the reserves we need to do that. We may have excess funds that kind of that we still have in the ARPA that we can use for this purpose. I would want to look back at that as well before even thinking of funding. If that's the decision the council wants to make. But I I think we're at that juncture. You find yourselves at the same juncture I find myself at. And it's a crossroads that that needs to get addressed. I mean, one stop shop, that's an easy one. We can deliver that project. And I think we can do that very easily within the resources that we have. The City Hall, well, didn't expect that either. I mean, I went down there, but every door was locked. And when I got the real tour, I was grateful to come upstairs, right? Wash the shoes. But there are issues there. What's not on this list is there's no generator for this building. There's a generator that runs only the annex to this building and only the IT portion of this building. So when the power went out, it took out the building. Yeah, it got more than just us too. Next door got it. But the reality is, is when the building went out, the front doors were locked. We literally had to have somebody get the doors open so that we could exit the building through the front entrance. Of course, the computers and the lighting all went down. We do have some emergency lighting that was available. Our elevator is not functioning. So had somebody been in there, I would not have been able to get them out. So we do need to consider that as well. It's not on the list, but it's from yesterday's comedy of errors. Because as we were talking about, we had just finished City Hall and we're moving to central fire. And sure enough, power was gone. So it was like a court of fate that it happened. Yeah, so it it made it very difficult, you know, for for anybody to go up and down the stairs because of the limited lighting. You had an outside wall with a window, you were okay. Internally, the building went dark, you know, midday because it's, you know, there's no windows in the center. There's no roof lights.
The bigger concern is being locked in a building or the elevator thing.
That did concern me greatly. Yeah, I I just couldn't imagine if somebody was in there, we might not have heard of them yet. It wouldn't know they were in there, you know, unless they could scream real loud. But I don't know how soundproof the elevator is, you know. No, Margaret, I won't make fun. We had some fun with that yesterday. But no, in all seriousness, I mean, that that is an issue that we also need to address is putting some kind of a generator. We're not going to abandon this building. You know, the councils in the past could have abandoned this building a long time ago. There were plans inside this folder that when that police department was built at that empty lot across the street, the parking lot today, that was the site of the city hall. That really was a site for a new city hall. Didn't happen for whatever reason. So as we look at the cards that we've been, you know, handed to work with, some of them are very easy to play on the table. Some of them, I think, are going to take some thinking and some time. And and I would ask you to bear with us, have patience, please, in terms of, you know, bringing some of these answers forward. I know that the fire department spent some time getting educated in terms of what a modern fire department station actually looks like, how it functions, how it operates. I've built those too through my career and some nicer than others, actually. But building them to be efficient and functional and and locating them accordingly. Because you just don't build fire stations without study. I mean, there's, you know, there are studies about response times and, you know, the three minute response, the five minute response. And God forbid you go past the seven or eight minute response. That becomes very, very bad. So, you know, we probably want to, we probably want to look at that in terms of what is the ultimate location. We've got a new bridge, the kind of change of the traffic pattern a little bit down here. So there's some considerations, I'm sure, that that Deputy Chief and his team are going to want to look at. And the chief, you're, I see you back there. You're behind Fink, I didn't see you. I'm sorry, chief. Sit down a little lower, Fink, so I can see the chief. There you go, thank you. But those are the kind of things that we really haven't had the full opportunity to explore. But like I said, I always want to apprise you of what we learn and what's going on so that we can have the conversations that are necessary going forward. I mean, we're in the beginning of fiscal twenty two. Some of what we're talking about today will will migrate its way into twenty three, into twenty three budget based upon your thoughts, considerations and approvals. Some of it we will do in twenty two. The one stop shop, we can move that forward. Some of the City Hall improvements, we need to figure out what those costs are. We don't have those numbers to share with you fully. You have some, but but not all. So I didn't, don't want any surprises. I want you to be fully apprised of, you know, what we're working on and what we're dealing with while we try and advance our strategic plans and all of our other goals, which we are doing.
Got one more slide.
There is one more.
Well, and.
Next step.
That was the next steps.
Yeah, so for the one stop shop, obviously, we have the two million dollars in ARPA funding that was set aside. We need to agree that that is the location, that that makes sense to the council. I really am serious about reinvesting in the I ninety two corridor. Something has to happen there. We can't let it sit. And if we start investing in it, maybe others might invest. Now, you have to put your money where your mouth is. I mean, if it's important to us, then it becomes important to everyone else. The building renovations that, you know, that would need to be done not only there, but then fact facing care as we move staff and relocate our staff, process and procedure we're working on. That is, that is, you'll see that sooner than you'll see any building changes or staff relocation. We will bring that forward and hopefully that addresses a lot of your concerns that, you know, people have complained about in years past. You know, and then we will explore the the e software solutions that are out there. There are great solutions that are available to us. They're canned, we don't have to customize them. And so we are, as a part of our overview of our software platform that we're running, this is just one of those. And how can we find a software platform that works so that people can actually access it, make their applications? It could be Saturday night at midnight, they could be working on an application and it's waiting for us Monday morning when we come in. You know, date, date and timestamp, we know when everything came in so that we're responding, first come, first served, right? So so that's that. City Hall, of course, the the general fund reserves, if we run out of money on the ARPA side, we still have ARPA. We still have our general fund excess reserve. Maybe if necessary, you know, part of a general obligation bond or maybe not. It all depends on what the numbers come back. I can't promise you what they will be. Retaining professional services for the waterproofing, the mold remediation, the lead abatement and the asbestos removal. All of those things need to be looked at as well as the design service, space configuration. Now, we're pretty good. We know what we need. I mean, we could probably do that on our own, but it's always good maybe to have a little architectural review because obviously it's an old building, we don't want to interfere with load bearing walls, right? Or coals because they're down there as well. And then the bill, as as Sarah likes to call the bill. And then that leave, that leaves us down to your fire station and possible funding sources. Again, depending on how things go, there's still the geo debt, there's the general fund excess, perhaps ARPA if there's anything anything left over. Grants possibly for some of it, obviously state, possibly state grants we can look to. Space needs and location, you know, I'm going to have to work, you know, depend on the chief, the deputy chiefs, their their team that they've assigned to the project to at least look at it in terms of what is the best location. We talked about the parking lot in between where they're at now and the existing police department, where it's at. Building in one place and then replacing the old building with a parking lot behind it. You know, if that is the most ideal location. We do have a map with every city owned property. I'm trying to share, you might have seen that today. So we got that issue to contend with. We we're going to need to address that lead abatement issue because it's not only inside the shooting range, it's actually in the corridor. You know, lead is a dust, it moves. So we want to make sure we abate that. We may still need to abate some of that and seal that portion of the building off, right? So it doesn't move. And then if we do decide this is what you want to do, we'd go into design development bidding and construction using, you know, either a design build contract or, you know, AGC contract or AI eight contract, depending on what's most advantageous to the city. We'd want to go down that road. And then renovation of the existing, the existing facility is the other alternative. Is determined that's the way to go, then we'd renovate the building and incur those expenses that weren't incurred. Were not incurred in the past. So a lot of tough choices when it comes to the to the fire station, but the choices that need to be made. And communities take great pride in their in their facilities and in their police and their fire and their equipment. And so do I, so do I. It's important. So that's all I have for tonight. And I thank you for your listening and patience. And if there's questions, we're still here to answer those.
Are there any further questions, Mr. Smith?
When we talk about replacement versus renovation of a fire station, what would be the timeline for even having that kind of an analysis? I know we talked about not wanting to necessarily get that study done, but how would we go about estimating that to to even start to understand?
So I reached out to Cheyenne Hattery just to get an idea. And in order for them to do a proper analysis, and they had included reviewing fire documentation, doing a study based on their calls and their call volume and where they're located, as well as doing a building assessment and doing a space needs analysis, their timeline was ten weeks.
Quick, and it cost estimate?
Their estimate for us to do all of that was fifty nine thousand five hundred. So if we eliminated, I mean, if we eliminated the physical assessment of the building, that takes away seventeen thousand seven hundred right off the top. So I mean, it just, it just depends on what council's direction is and those hard decisions that need to be made.
Other questions?
I I think there was a study done before two thousand and six.
Oh, there's lots of.
I remember Etheridge came forward, he needed a new fire, a new police station. We got a new, so we did a study and I think it was twenty thousand back then. And they said, yeah, yeah, this building's, you know, it's time to move. But then we said, we said, well, what are we going to do with the fire department? Well, we'll fix it up for the fire department.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It was somewhere in here. So, yeah, it was somewhere in here. I think this is January, it ended up being a total of thirty nine thousand nine eighty. This was, it was either this one right here, the sixty thousand dollar one, or this one that recommended a new police and fire station.
A long time ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. And I think we we built a new public works building, a new water point, a new library. And I think the council was just kind of fried on doing anything.
Oh, I'm sure.
New, you know, because it was going to the taxpayers.
There was, I I think you're right. I think I think you've got to a saturation point of the community, you know, in terms of bonding, in terms of capital improvements between a library, the North Slope plant, the police station, the public works facilities. It gets to a point where it almost seems like you're overspending. So the good news is, is that those were wise investments, they're still standing, they're good investments. And now you're challenged with, you know, you're challenged with the South Slope. I mean, it is a significant future investment that is going to be, have to be addressed. And then you're challenged with, you know, the minor renovation here in the basement, and it's minor. You know, you're, then the changes over at Public Works are minor, but it's the fire station. So it's really, it's the fire station project and then it's that South Slope treatment plant. Those are the two big ticket items that are looming on the immediate horizon.
So I would like to say that I know that that excess reserve was a topic that was needed to be brought back in two thousand and twenty two. We've mentioned it now and obviously we're hearing multiple projects that some of that could go to. I would love to see more details on that, on this financing of these three options. Mr. One.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I think this is exactly why we need to get a handle on everything that's that's out there. We we talked about this before. It is, we have some real gaps in continuity and 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 things, you know. This was, was all going on in the seven years I was here, but it was never brought up.
To your point, Mr. Vitas showed me this week a a great monthly report sheet that includes a portion for council directives, things that we need followed up on. So that is coming. That's the kind of regular update to us is coming. It's a good form.
But but these are the sorts of things so that when we then make a decision on LAZ River or we make a decision on whatever other bonding things we're talking about that we say, but here are all the things that we need to consider before we make a decision. And because, I mean, my gut, based on on what we're seeing here, is we probably need to build a new fire station. You know, but we we don't have limitless funds here. I know ARPA came in and 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 those sorts of things. And and I I think the good thing is, I think we've had enough debt that has retired or is retiring that we probably have some bandwidth in our in our bonding that we can, we can actually get this done. But we also need to take into consideration. But we also need to take into consideration, where does this need to be? I mean, just because it was there before doesn't mean that putting it right in front of it is the right location. You know, is it downtown? Is it just above the hill? Is it in a TIF? Is it in, you know, because this would be a public building that would be developed. You know, so I think we really need to understand. I'm a proponent of it. I think it's clear to be done. I mean, I remember right after I got elected and we went through it. I was like, oh, they're making this work. And since then, it hasn't been brought up. So I appreciate you guys bringing it up now. We just need to have a more robust conversation, not only of this, but any other things that are outstanding. And have that conversation on what are our debt services and what's going to work. And we have to make tough decisions on what we're going to do and what we're not.
What do you think?
It's a good point. As I told you before, as I find things, I will report them. It's my job to keep you informed. You know, it's the staff's job to keep you fully informed. And as we find problems, we find issues that need to be addressed, you know, we will bring them forward no matter which department it is. I think it just behooves us to do that so that you can make the informed decisions when we make those tough choices at budget time, especially. Some of this information never saw the light of day until just very recently.
That's the point. We can't anticipate every single expense that's going to come in front of us. So having a balanced approach to every expenditure is absolutely important. And, but that does mean that some things will come to us later and we'll just have to address it then. Mr. White?
But to that point, that's where we need to know and have an idea of what's coming down the pipe. I mean, because the concern, and this is some of the things that could happen and whoever will probably be, that's good enough. I'm sorry he's not here tonight, is that those things where we make a decision and then three months later, all of a sudden, something new comes up that we haven't heard anything about before pops up. And so that's where I want us to charge all of you guys. I mean, don't worry about being a bearer of bad news. Come and tell us what's going on. That's what we need to know so that we can then make long-term plans and break down.
Does anyone else have a question? Or because I'll have a final comment here and then we'll move to the next question.
So with this, what do you need from us to make kind of determination? Because obviously this is not only a building thing, but a location thing. I mean, you know, it clearly, I would be like, oh, this is great. Well, we've got some extras based on the top part, so we'll just put it down there. Well, that, you know. So what do you need from us to start this conversation? And I know we don't want to do, but we're going to have to do diligence.
Absolutely.
What does that look like?
I can answer that. I mean, in terms of the one-stop shop, I think I would just like the nod that you are okay with that location for the general purpose of establishing the one-stop center so that we have somewhere to house it and we can start to plan toward it. And as we plan toward it, to report back to you how that is going. I mean, that's the footprints of this new monthly report that we're establishing so that, you know, at least monthly you're going to hear about it. You may hear about it more frequently if there's issues, but that is kind of a summation of what's going on step by step. So that's number one. Is that a location that you would be content with because of its cost efficiency and the fact that a part of the operation is literally already there? One of the legs of the three-legged stool is there, right? So we would only be moving two more legs down there.
Yeah, I'd like to direct staff to do that, but in conjunction with that, encourage also the expansion of the garage so that we can move the stuff that's at water down there. And third, that eliminate that place from being the location for our storage. That's not the highest use. If that's going to be our one-stop shop, to make sure that our staff has ample room, offices, all of those sorts of things. Find an alternative location for, you know, garbage bins and so. Okay, that would be what I would like to do.
I'm very much aligned with that, though I do think we need to look at where we want it to go from that community angle.
Yeah.
Because I think retaining some of those, the downtown elements, the citizen-facing elements especially. Paying bills, fine, that's a different issue. But specifically, we talk about our community programs, the people who might be coming in seeking help. Also, ensuring we have translation services. Those are the things, we need to pick those up in those finer details. I don't want to see us, I understand it might mean a director has to cover two sites, but I think that is, I would rather our director be driving back and forth on occasion. We're happy to pick during one spot one day and one, you know, based on their workload. And rather than us having the citizens having to go back and forth. And that is, I think, the bigger concern from me. But otherwise, I think where you're going and observing, especially to building-related items, you're not going to get a lot of those things out of public works. We should go to them. That makes a lot of sense.
Right, yeah, they like where they're at. They're hard to move.
So you need a motion on this? I'm sorry. You need a motion on the one-stop shop, or could you just go ahead?
I think we can go by consensus.
I think consensus would be good on the record.
Well, this is one of our thumbs up moments.
It's a rare moment.
Yeah.
All right.
We're all behind those details. Thank you. If I flush you and it's out open. I would say for the other things, I don't know if you had other things you wanted to say that you needed for direction from us. But financing.
I mean, the financing, when Carol gets back, you know, she had the announcement of now she has a second granddaughter. So she took some time to spend with her newborn granddaughter, and God bless her, so all good news. She will be back. We need her. And then, you know, as far as the city hall, I mean, it plays into this discussion, not with the fire station, but it plays into the one-stop shop and making this the administrative center for this local government and then the one-stop shop down there.
As far as the city hall is, all for 100%. Let's get the basement. I think that that's the immediate thing. Let's get that squared away, clean, direct, get direct staff to do the whatever, the records and...
I have one ready to go.
And getting that squared away. As far as the community room, council room, whatever, I'd like to maybe take a beat on that just for a second. Find out what the fire station, I mean, then maybe something where, depending on where the fire station winds up and you're building it out, I mean, we got a community room across the hall. And you figuring out how much space you need. I mean, if you need all of this space for offices, and that's one thing. Maybe you just need this space for office space, and we can use the community room there and keep the council. I think that we need to kind of figure that out. And some of that will bear itself out as you move things, as we have the conversations about who winds up staying here for community needs, the downtown cooking manager. There's going to be some that I think wind up needing to stay here versus that.
That's a possibility. It is.
We seem to have logged away from it.
Mr. Rowett, can you?
That wasn't being used.
Okay.
So consent to some, that's a good way to go is to leave in the basement and take a beat, to use your terminology.
Because I know that the dais does not, it's not comfortable for all of you. And that's not the original dais. I'm sure of that.
No, you said 14.
There used to be a lot larger number of older residents, older persons in the city. And so looking at that as well, I mean, that's kind of what's driving it is how to create more space for citizens who attend meetings because we have limited seating capacity there. There's more capacity in this room actually than in the council chamber, only because of the configuration of the dais. And, you know, looking at a way to reconfigure that, get work inside the building. What I have to is just to make it so convenient for citizens and comfortable for you to conduct business as a council.
And I have one need that I have identified, I think, just for the entire organization through these conversations and observations. And that is that whatever we can do as a council to promote stability in the city organization so that people can handle this job, these bigger jobs, some of which are surprises, some are not. And as I described, some people this week that tend to steal another person's phrase, the three-legged stool, of former issues that need to be resolved, strategic plan issues that we've all agreed to, and any unexpected issues. That's a lot of stuff to keep a stool stable and on an even keel. And so whatever the council can do to promote that stability, I think is important. Whatever HR can do and you can do to keep getting those people in the positions that are still vacant, that is important to continue to stabilize. So I think with that, that will help us so that we don't have as many of these situations where we have, something happened at one point and then the information goes away. And, you know, there's that kind of thing. We need to have that stability in the organization so that we're really moving down the track.
How many vacancies do we still have?
The number fluctuates, but it's in the 30s, somewhere in the...
It's down from the 40s where we were.
Originally, it was 49.
42, 42.
We're down to like the 30s.
Between 39 and 49, 42.
I mean, we had, I mean, between October, like you said, between October and just last week, we probably had at least 26 internal transfers that we advertised internally and people moved around. And that doesn't even count the retirements that are forthcoming.
There's attrition.
And then we had at least another...
We hired the extra six.
I don't know, another 12 or 15 that came in brand new. So what's happening is that the organization, the organization is going to transition all year. We have retirements that are scheduled throughout this year into December. And as those things happen, we're going to keep this wagon train is not stopping this year. You know, we will fill key positions. We will fill a lot of positions, but we will have this rolling average that will take place tonight. And my prediction is that in 2023, with all the retirements that we're going to have eventually, that we're going to reach kind of a plateau that's more of a norm as opposed to this process of catching up. So bear with us.
Do you provide just how many helps we can bear?
Happy to do that.
Yeah, and I would like the council to get an update on where those consultants are with filling some of those big decisions.
Interviews are coming.
Right. I've told them that because we talk weekly, but I think broadly we can catch them up.
Yeah. Public Works will fall first. That one is coming.
Oh, doesn't mean rise up.
Rise up. That's what we get somebody. We're going to make that domino fall. That one will fall first.
So we move on to miscellaneous business. Mr. Smith? Thank you. Anyone? No? I only have one tiny thing. That's the, just, I will probably be reaching out to each of you. You know, April is almost upon us, and that's about a year since the changeover. And I sat down with people then. I'd like to sit down yearly just to check in on where your agenda is at. What, you know, where are we all? Take the temperature of each of you. So be looking for an email to schedule that. Okay? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, smart. Was there any directions that you wanted us to take as far as moving forward with the fire station?
That's what I was asking. I think that probably needs to, you've got to figure out where that needs to be.
Okay.
Again, my thought is it's going to need...
My initial question talking about not going, like, in assessing whether we need a study was more related to that building component of it.
Right.
Because it's probably likely that that is not really the question we need to be asking, is whether we're... I just, I agree with that. I do understand that assessing and studying where that fire station should be located if we look at it, that is very much the important part.
That could be step one.
Councilman, do you agree that we focus any study on where something new would go as opposed to renovating?
Well, the fire...
I mean, the fire chief is here. He's definitely chief. I mean, this is your baby, guys. And we're trying to give you a new home.
Basically, do you want a new building or want us to renovate?
I'll take a new one, then you just move it along. There we go.
Here, it's never red. I think, I guess deeper than that, I would prefer to see something modern and new built to accommodate operations for the future, for the next 40, 50 years, right? I mean, that's probably the real answer. You know, location, I mean, that's probably a big issue in terms of response time. You know, the dynamics of the community will change. I mean, we can't predict what will get built, but we do have the equipment to address what we have today and probably then some. So we get equipment responses, you get response time based on location, and we could certainly start entertaining a dialogue with fire and rescue and come up with some answers in terms of the best location.
Okay. With your support, I'd be happy to put together an RSQ or something so that we can get some estimates to bring forward. Yes, okay. As much as I hate to...
We don't want to do that.
You've said those dollars. I mean, there's been a lot of studying. Yeah, there's been a lot of studying done.
This is the final study.
The final.
Yeah. Okay, we need to move to executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convenes a public comment.
Well, public comment? Anyone here? No? Thank you.
Let me start over. Your Honor, I make a motion that if the council convenes this executive session for the purpose of discussion of elected negotiating matters, 5 IRC M20 slash NC2. Thanks.
Question by Oliver Brian. Second by Oliver Wentz. We'll call please.
Oliver, where?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Chip?
Hi.
Let's see it.
Hi.